...any evidence that they have that they believe casts doubt on the guilt of the defendant. And they may also present any legal arguments for the defendant and point out any legal mistakes that they believe the prosecutor has made in the case. Under both the U.S. Constitution and the state constitution, a person accused of a crime generally has a right to a jury trial. Jurys don't decide issues of law. What they do is decide facts, meaning they consider all the evidence and all of the testimony that's presented to them, and then they make a determination as to what they believe happened. Criminal cases end with a jury verdict, either guilty or not guilty. If the defendant is found not guilty, then they're free to go. If the defendant is found guilty, then some type of punishment is issued to them, whether that's imprisonment, or a fine, or probation. Civil cases are what most folks think of, there's lawsuits. These cases involve one party suing another party. The first case you're going to hear this morning is a civil case. They're usually private parties, although the government can sue or be sued as well. The suing party is called the plaintiff, and the party who gets sued is called the defendant. Usually, the plaintiff wants money from the defendant to compensate for some injury that the defendant caused. But you could also sue in an attempt to force somebody to do or to not do something. For example, to abide by the terms of a contract, or for example, as you'll hear about this morning, to settle boundaries. Unlike in a criminal case, a losing defendant in a civil case is not at risk of going to jail or being imprisoned. Civil cases end in a judgment. This establishes whether the defendant owes anything to the defendant, and if so, what or how much does the defendant owe to the plaintiff. A judgment in a civil case can also impose an injunction, which directs the defendant to do or not do something. After the trial is finished, the losing party may appeal, and that's how we get to where we are today. There are two levels of appellate courts in North Carolina, the Court of Appeals and the Supreme Court of North Carolina. Now, the appellate courts don't play the trials. Instead, they review what happened at the trial court to see if all proper procedures were followed and to ensure that no legal errors occurred. Lawyers conduct arguments in front of the appellate courts, laying out the issues that the courts must decide and describing why they believe their client should win the case. Appellate courts, unlike juries, appellate courts specialize in deciding questions of the law, such as the meaning of the state law or the meaning of a provision of the state constitution. In general, they trust the trial court to determine the case. Now, all cases are guaranteed at least one appeal, except for a few very serious cases, such as if the trial court has enclosed the death penalty, that first round of appeal is to the Court of Appeals of North Carolina. At the Court of Appeals, every case is reviewed by a panel of three judges, who decide legal issues by majority vote. A second appeal to the State Supreme Court is guaranteed only when the Court of Appeals judges disagree on an issue. Otherwise, the losing side must request or petition the Supreme Court of North Carolina to take their case, and the Supreme Court can make a determination as to whether or not they believe they should take that case and whether or not they will take the case. There are seven justices on the Supreme Court, and they decide cases by majority vote. A decision of the Supreme Court of North Carolina is final as to any issue of state law. If there's an issue of federal law, then the parties may appeal to the Supreme Court of the United States in Washington, D.C. Today, you're going to have a chance to observe an oral argument in front of our Supreme Court. And we normally sit in Raleigh, but in celebration of the 200th anniversary of the Supreme Court of North Carolina, we are traveling to counties throughout the state to hold oral arguments. Thank you so much for coming out to see our courts in action. I hope that you find any arguments interesting. I hope that you enjoy seeing the process. You are always welcome to come to discuss the law, should you choose to reset. At this time, I want to introduce our Chief Justice of the Supreme Court of North Carolina, Sharon Beasley, who will discuss the current position of the Supreme Court.
Good morning.
Good morning.
We are absolutely delighted and honored to be able to hold court here in Halifax. I want to thank Senior Resident Superior Court Judge Allen Hinton and Chief District Court Judge Brenda Brandt, and your commissioners and law enforcement, and all the folks who have been responsible in making this huge undertaking possible. We understand that there has been quite a modification of the courtroom, and everybody's just so wonderful and so welcoming. It's taken a lot of work to get this done, and so we are just so incredibly grateful that we are able to be here and that everybody is glad to have us here. Amy just told you that the court is celebrating its 200th anniversary, and so we were really very excited to be able to come to help us, since it is one of the historic places in North Carolina that was once a capital. And so while we are hopeful that we can get to a lot of places last year, this year, and next year, the legislation that Amy just told you about actually ends in December of 2020, and then we will only then be able to hold court in Raleigh, in eighteen, and in August. We're delighted to be here, and hopefully we can come back again sometime soon. I am Sharon Beasley, Chief Justice of the Court of Appeals of North Carolina, and I have been a chief justice since March the 1st of this year. So I'm surprised to tell you about how I got here. I practiced law in the Bay of Oklahoma County, and I was an assistant corporate defender there. Before then, I practiced in corporate law at EPA, and what was then Wells, Watson, Wachos, The Pine, Bush, kind of place, and agribusiness, and then I went to the corporate defender department. I was there for five years, and working with the folks who were charged and everything behind the misdemeanor assault and murder. I was serving there for five years, Governor Jim Hunt appointed me to serve on the district court. I served as a district court judge there for 10 years. I was out of the criminal, civil, traffic, juvenile, and I was also a family court judge. After 10 years, I was elected to the North Carolina Court of Appeals in 2008. I served there for four years, and in 2012, Governor Beth Beasley appointed me to serve on the Supreme Court of North Carolina. I served there for almost seven years, this is my seventh year. I served as a judge for 20 years, which is part of my tenure, and served with Judge Hinton on the district court, as well as Judge Brandt on the district court. And you know that North Carolina all judges work like this, so I've had four elections, appointed to serve as Chief Justice on March the 1st. I'm the 29th Chief Justice of the Supreme Court of North Carolina, the first African-American woman, the second African-American, and really, really honored to be there. So now I have an election next year. I wear two hats as Chief Justice. You know that the governor is the executive branch of government, the city prosecutor and the Speaker of my House are the leaders of the legislative branch of government. As the Chief Justice, I'm the judicial branch of government. And so Amy just told you that each one of us, as members of this court, for the work that we do and people see here today, has one goal on all the cases that come before the court. And so, just like all the other justices, we think about the cases, we discuss the cases through what we call conference, and so we will be there once we go back to Raleigh, and we may have decisions on each justice. How do I have the same kind of road as everybody else? I lead the court administrative room, but other than that, we are co-people colleagues on the court. And so my other goal is to lead the court, lead the judicial branch of government. There are almost 6,500 members of the judicial branch of government, there are elected judges, elected DAs, corporate defenders, magistrates, courts and courts, and I'm close to all the folks who serve our court system all over the city of North Carolina. There is an executive director of the administrative office of the courts, which runs the administrative pieces of the judicial branch that's been through Luton, where I served as a sheriff in North Carolina. So I am honored to serve you as our Chief Justice. We are very, very honored to be here with you all today, and thank you so much, and of course, Justice, having us, and welcome us to historic contact. Thank you very much.
We'll be getting started in just a few minutes with a few announcements. If you need anything during the oral argument, you have to let one of the volunteers know so that they assist you. And Denise, I believe, you're asking that they'll exit through this door?
Yes.
Okay. So at the conclusion of the court sessions today, if you're only ticketed for the first session, then we have two people who are going to be arguing shortly, who are being in the courtroom, and we have two people who are standing by the sessions. If that's the case for you, just stay in the courtroom. Volunteers may ask to see your second ticket or get your name again if you are staying. But if you are not staying for the second court session, if you are not ticketed for the second court session, then what we need you to do is exit through this door. Now, it says margin to exit open, but today, we can go through that doorway. And I ask that you exit pretty quickly. We have another couple hundred folks that are going to be coming in back towards shortly after you, before we start our next court session. Thank you so much for being here with us today, and we will be getting started in just the next minute or two.
All rise. Honorable Chief Justice and Associate Justices of the Supreme Court of North Carolina. Oh yes, oh yes, oh yes, the Supreme Court of North Carolina is now sitting for the dispatch of business. God save the state and this honorable court.
I would like, before we start the argument, I'm glad we had a chance to chat before the court came on, but I would like to, again, thank you so much for hosting the court, and I'd also like to introduce to you the members of the court. To my immediate right is Senior Associate Justice Paul Newby. To my left is Justice Ramin Hudson. To Justice Newby's right is Justice Sam J. Ervin the fourth. To Justice Hudson's left is Justice Michael Morgan. To Justice Ervin's right is Justice Anita Earle, and to Justice Morgan's left is Justice Mark Davis. Court now calls the case of Dontriss versus Pendrell Land.
I am Ron Dontriss. May it please be my honor, I'm a member of the firm of law, sleep, laws, and law of the state of Hollywood, and the way it's handled. We have the pleasure of representing your office, and we all approach you in your This case is about the ownership of the land. In 1910, A.L. Lee Fleming purchased approximately 697 acres of Nancy J. Best period in Halifax County. Six years later, he subdivided the lands to sell off his plots. He created a map that's reported in Book One, Page 32 in Halifax County Registry. This is a copy of it, and it reflects the state of the earth in 1916. The important part of this case is right down here. This is an earthen dam. The earthen dam was built in approximately 1730s, and it is about 1,260 feet long. The purpose was to create water power to run and build. It was right down here in the corner where the White's Mill Pond is dammed, and where the Kupuiki Swamp Run, which means creek or stream, runs out. So the water can't go here, it's going out. And this could be found in Rule 92 exhibits, which were filed with the court. For the purpose of clarity, this is Exhibit One of Rule 92 exhibits. This is a blow-up of the pertinent area. And what you're seeing when you have a chance to examine it is, this is Lot 16, Lot 7 is up here. These are owned by Mr.
This is labeled the dam. This is six years before the year of the law. This shows this is the working name. This is the water hole. Bob, that's here, to the water, Rule 9216. This is very important, because the water hole is the notation of where this boundary is. One of the dams, the high watermark, and it connects over here to this dot. The dot of the water hole is colored in. When you look at the whole map in a few moments, you'll see that the colored-in dots mean it's in the water. The dots with the circle with no color mean it's on the land. There's no legend on this map, so we have to do what detectives were to see that.
Mr. Garber, is there any evidence in the record as to where the water hole was located other than what's shown on this map? Either in the, well, not for the original version?
Yes, Justice Ervin. These are some pictures that are in Rule 9216. These are collectively, total three. And this shows a look going down the dam from the circle with no color in it, to the middle of the dam, to the end of the dam. And a lot of water holes like this.
Is there any evidence in the record that pinpoints this specific water hole referred to on the map, other than the map itself?
It can be scaled in these various maps as to where it would be. There is nothing definitive in the record where anybody in the record is saying it is here or it was here, although the cases now believe. Evidence can be put into the record as to where a landmark was, even if it's not there anymore, especially say a boat changes.
Is the Court of Appeals correct in saying essentially that we don't know where the water hole is or was?
Court of Appeals was incorrect in saying that it's not there anymore. That was concluded, Court of Appeals made. The handyman, expert for the defense, said that he didn't think it was there anymore because the egg. Court of Appeals took the next step, saying, "There's nothing in the record to say that it's there." The important thing is that it could be located, if I look at the picture, there's measuring where it's indicated and going that spot.
Has the process that you described actually been done, and are the laws of that process set forth in the record?
Well, that would be, I suppose, a QD doing that, and what's possible is to measure. I don't think there's any testimony in the record that's exactly where it is. Maybe that's a matter for remand, have that measured and done. But when you certainly look at the maps that appear, there are more than enough maps to figure out where that distance is. Approximately 600 feet, and so it can be measured off, and see if there's a tree left, see if there's a stump left. That could be a matter for remand. The important part, then, is the boundary line goes from this point where the water hole is or was, up here along the northern edge of the dam, and here the line comes in, and it's on the land. And that is the high watermark at that one, because that's on land, but the water is right next to it. This is Photo Two in the 92 exhibits, and it shows this man at the point where this tree is. He's standing on dry land, but here is the water right here. That is this circle. That's what's on Lot 7 and 16, and dividing line, common line, between 7, 16, and 8. And you notice that it's been posted, the defendant posted it here. The defendant's motivation is to take ownership of this land, take it away from Mr. Dontriss, and post it for hunting, because they don't want anybody on this pond or on their land. So that's the crux of what's going on in this case.
How should we evaluate the existence of this water hole with a reference to the earthen dam, especially considering that the case law favors more permanent fixtures than those that can be removed?
Certainly, in this day and age, the art of surveying, the science of surveying, what everyone taught is advanced. Back in this day, 100 years before, you saw a lot of references to red oats, railroad ties, the old wagon wheels, and that's the way it was done back then, because science didn't have, I mean, surveyors didn't have lasers that can measure exact distance to a heavy brush. Back then, had to go around it or cut through it, and they used a lot of landmarks. And maybe it wasn't foresightful to use a tree, because 100, 200 years later, it might not be there. Well, we can certainly look at where it was.
How would we reconcile how it is today, though, in terms of the proclivity towards looking at a more permanent fixture such as the dam, with what you would have us to do in terms of looking at the water hole as being the salient landmark?
Yes. The landmark, the water lake's significance was, it was a landmark which was the southeast corner of Lot 8. And there's nothing that we can do to go back and whisper, "Mr. Flory, the engineer did this map, hey, put something more permanent there," or refer to something more permanent. I think there was just a tendency in those days, that really lasted well into the 20th century, to use landmarks. And a water hole is a tree for this for a long time. How long, we know. In this case, somebody would have to go out there and measure that distance and see if there's a tree there. To some extent, it's not that important, because the importance was, it was there at that time. And it could be located in the map, just as if a description is anchored on a road. Let's say they're straight in the road. There's a case that's discussed, that's cited in the book, where the description was on it, anchored to a road. The Department of Transportation came along and straightened that road. So in essence, it moved that description, but those locations can be found.
On the map, it references either its eye or a stake. Do you know what that word is, and if that corner between Lot 7 and 8, if that could have been located?
Yes, as a matter of fact, that's a great question, because this is where he's standing. And what they found was, the stake had been pulled up, and it's put out here. I believe it shows that.
Let me move to another question, if I may. The cases that are relied upon are situations where deeds make reference to a monument, such as a dam or a creek. It is clear there that you run through the centerline. This, however, as far as I can tell from the record, has no deeds that say it's to the dam and then up and with the dam. Am I correct that there are no deeds, and all we have is the actual reported plaque?
Yes. It's very unusual, that's the way it was done by Mr. Fleming.
So there's no reference to the water hole, any of the deeds either, to follow up on Justice Newby's claim?
The later deeds incorporate the map in our reference. That's as close as they get to what it is. It's a very unusual description. But what he did, Mr. Fleming, did it that way.
So the essence of what this case, and I know we're up here on summary judgment, so that's a different test, no issue of material fact, the party being entitled to judgment as a matter of law. But is it your contention, then, that the essence of ownership will depend on how someone, not would interpret it, the, because there are none, but how this map is interpreted? Certainly, it seems like the record is replete with folks saying, "We've taken what is shown on the map and shown it on the ground," that being part of it. So to me, it gets back to the controversy being whether it's to the dam and with the dam, or whether it's to the high water and with the high water.
Yes, exactly. But there's no, there is no deed that states either of those things. That's what I'm saying. This is a very unusual situation. Mr. Fleming just put a map over it, and then incorporated our reference through the decades, through the centuries.
Well, don't feel bad. I found a deed in Burke County dated 1865 that was still used to describe property in the 1950s, until beginning in a flat of now down.
I have a question about the map.
I understood you to say that there was a significance to the dot that says water hole along the map being hilltop. My question is that, in the map that is attached to the response to the positional DDR in the green booklet, shows the dot, it's clearly an open circle on page 29 of the appendix. And I'm just wondering if there's anything in the record that explains that difference between the way that dot appears on some of the maps and none others? Because if it's that significant, it seems there might be an explanation somewhere.
Are you talking about this?
I'm talking about the map that's attached to the appendix in the...
Is that the mean?
Yes. It's much smaller, that corner of the map is much smaller, but even in the smaller version, you can tell where it says water hole, that the circle is open. Would we have to refer to the original map to tell?
Yes, I didn't bring that note to a quickie when I had that petition. These are maps, this is a map that came straight from the Halifax County Registry. And yes, these are very small dots. You can see them here in this road. There's a dot there, dot there, dot there. They're all open. This is where the common line between 11 and 12 goes into the water, it's open. And this is the map that's came from the registry of deeds. And it's got this flat law up here. And up here...
And I guess that's what I'm asking about because on the map that's attached here, that one that is labeled water oak is open. It is filled in on some of the other maps attached, but not on this particular one. I'm just curious about the discrepancy.
All I can say is that this is the way it came from the Register of Deeds.
Mr. Garble, could you speak up?
Yes, I will. This is the way it came from the Register of Deeds with that law on there.
I'm asking, in the Court of Appeals, how that the survey that you offered by Mr. Stahl nearly demarks what's contested and doesn't establish that there's a claim that the boundaries are comporting with what your client's testimony was? What's your response to that?
Mr. Stahl did a map to show intentions for it. And in the record, we cover this in our brief between pages twenty-five and thirty. Mr. Stahl is a surveyor, placed it on the ground. He's a lawyer. Mr. Childs is a surveyor, and he's here, has an affidavit, and that's what Mr. Stahl says. Here's what he's speaking to. Mr. Dorfert pointed the hand in that case, says this is where the... There are two cases, two common cases in the jurisprudence of state. They talk about places on the ground, and we discuss these in our brief. And one is the case where, it was a case in Pender County, and the person trying to place it on the ground took an aerial photograph and tried to place it atop seventeen ninety-five grand to show where some land was. Of course, that's not nearly good enough. And another dispute description that we discussed in our brief, it says that, the description is that the subject property is three miles north of seven. Of course, that's not nearly good enough, but all sorts of places are within three miles north of seven. So the Stahl map... Which is, map number four, the ninety-two map, shows the line that is on the top here is where the high water mark is. That is where the ownership of the dogger just stops and the water starts. The water belongs to these various lots. The water here belongs to eight, one here belongs to nine. And Mr. Stahl, the surveyor, shows that if this transformation of deeds, the defendant rather than the deed, was taxed on, packed on extra land to that land Mr. Smith was trying to invade, the ownership would be this bottom line down here. And it simply cut off the dogger just, all where it crosses the dam and beyond the dam, but there is no dam. It's about three hundred feet of land that is not covered by the dam. Then we cut off the dogger just and everybody else using that water. And that's the effect of it. That's what the defendant said at one. They just wanted the land to claim it.
On the best farm map, you've got these four lines that depict the dam. Your contention is that the outer line is the base of the dam?
Yes, ma'am.
Is there anything on the best farm map that shows the high water mark as distinguished from the base of the dam?
I think that that's all one in the same.
Well, they're apparently not one in the same in the map, right? Because if there were one, if there weren't one, if there were the difference, now there's land on the outside of the dam as depicted in some of these more recent maps, maybe a third of an acre or something like that to the property of the defendant.
The shape of it today is shown by the Stahl map. And it's not a Hoover Dam situation, it's concrete.
Right.
It's earth that was piled there. And yes, it's a jagged line, irregular line, whatever length we must say. Lots of law dictionary says high water mark is in reference to waters, artificial ponds or lakes, created by dams and unadmitted streams. It denotes the highest point on the shore to which the dam, the lake, the water, the ordinary circumstances. And it is where the water comes in and touches the earth. I don't believe there's any place that says this is the high water mark.
But so your contention is that the outer line on the best farm map is both the base of the dam and a high water mark?
Yes, yes.
Because where the dam ends and headed in a westerly direction toward the corner of Lot Seven and Eight, where's the boat ramp that was built by, I believe, your clients in the nineteen forties?
Yes. The best map to show is the Stahl map, which is in four, is this rectangle right here. And this boat ramp, and as you see, if we take the language that the defendant put in the deed from Mr. Smith, it cuts it off. It takes it from the ownership of the dogger just and gives it to the hunting property. That's the essence of what happened to this.
Mr. Garble, going back to the fact that we are here on the summary judgment order, is your argument that summary judgment was improper on this issue completely, or that it was proper to grant it to the wrong party?
I think it was, could have been granted to the dogger just. I think there are these various issues that could be explored, they were not. But I think the title is absolutely clear that it is the ownership of the dogger just. There's really no disagreement between the parties about the deed intended to change the title.
So there's no question of fact?
I don't know that there is. I think the judgment should have been awarded to the dogger just.
Well, the only question of fact would be the interpretation of the map.
Yes.
Well, how would you reconcile that position with the fact that in the Stahl map, there is no boundary line that's established that would comport with what the boundary line is from all of the other granting instruments? And when you look at that and write up Mr. Dorfert's on the testimony, Stahl's map and Mr. Dorfert's affidavit testimony don't even line up, where would the genuine issue of fact be, in your view, if there is one at all?
If there is one, it's to go out and survey this line. To go out and survey this line. This is essentially what's been done here. This is Mr. Stahl's survey. And it shows these points he made because to measure a curve, they really can't measure a curve unless they measure a point every inch. And what he's done here is he got the major points where there's a turn. And this is the dogger's line or the high water mark. And what he did with these hash lines to show that they're between the high water mark and the line that is a deed from Mr. Smith through the defendant. That's how the defendant is moving it to achieve their sole ownership and control of this land.
But if the trial judge declared the Stahl map to be void, and that in and of itself tended to shift matters towards the defendant, why was it not appropriate for the map to be declared void by the trial judge if it did not comport with all the other instruments?
The trial ruling was strictly on this point, that you divide a monument. That was the sole reason that Judge Ray used. He said, "The dam is a monument, you split it, and you go right down the middle." Which, of course, the big problem with that is the dam doesn't cover the entire length of Lot Sixteen. There are about three hundred feet between the western end of the dam and this point where Lot Seven and Sixteen and Eight converge. That rule of construction obviously doesn't apply on that three hundred feet because there's no dam there. And that was the sole reason of the ruling. It was a straight summary judgment, no explanation, no map, here it is. There's no corner point of surveyor, go out and do this. It was just summary judgment granted. And it was just that reason of dividing a monument. It was not a matter of, say, this map is good, this map is not good.
Well, on the question of whether summary judgment is correct here, don't the cases say that whether, how the bound, how the language in the deed fits to the actual boundary? Is the question a bit rude?
The first consideration is that it's a non-jury trial or court decision on what the boundary is. And if, and let's say this case, the judge says the boundary is the run of the Hookey Swamp, so it's the high water mark. And there's a question about exactly where that is. That is what goes to be ruled.
Well, here, though, we've got, your client says it goes to the high water mark, and Mr. Rounser will have a chance to tell me if I misunderstood his client's argument, and I hope he will if I misunderstood him. But at least I understood the record that indicated that his experts determined, in his opinion at one point, that this water oak that I asked you about was in the middle of the dam. And therefore, that was the dividing line between the two parts, that was why he put the dividing line in the middle of the dam. You say that the water oak is at the high water mark or in the water. Why isn't that by itself a question of fact?
I think the two experts with the defense admitted our case. Let me show you exactly where they did it.
He used a little bit of equivocal language in his admission. But is there a disputed issue, or is there a genuine material fact arising from the location of this water oak?
Mr. Garble, before you answer Justice Arden's question, I just want to make you aware that you have three minutes and thirty seconds left. You did not ask for time for a vote, but I just wanted to make you aware of that.
Yes. And I assume I can only give thirty minutes. I'm going to ask you that question very quickly, and then follow time out, so I have something. On page nineteen of our brief, which is the same as the record page seven oh three, the surveyor is asked about these four lines. And the question was, this was the penultimate question, to get the essence of it, read all of the discussion. And my question to him was, then on the fourth line over from the word dam and the arrow, would you agree that that's the north side of the dam where it meets the water? He says, "That is certainly what you presume by looking at the map." The surveyor says, "Yeah, it's over there on the high water mark where the water meets the dam." And even more important map is on page seventeen of our brief, and it's record page seven fifty-three, asking questions of Mr. Haneydale, a lawyer, expert for the defense. And we're talking about this water oak. And Justice Hugman, you were talking about it was not colored in. And he and I have gone to the conversation, and it is colored in there. And the question was, "Do you think the water oak is growing in the middle of the dam?" Because if you look at that law, it's in the middle of the dam. And he says, "No, I think it's by the dam, of course, no." He was saying, "Of course, the water oak is in the water." That's why it's called a water oak. And the own experts with the defense say that the edge of the dam is the high water oak. So I'd like to reserve my precious two minutes.
This is one map that's involved in this case, which is one of the talks about. This is the map of the famous property.
Is that second half that you just put up in, attached to some of these outlines?
Yes, ma'am.
Because I can't really see it from here, not what you're doing. Can you refer us to?
Yes, yes, I can. This is the trailer map of the famous property. This is the map that is referred to in every deed that the dogger just signed. Both the plaintiffs in this case have signed these, signed in this map for a more complete description of their property. This map shows the mill pot here. It shows the line between Kerry Smith, which is the defendant's property, from the road to the same hall, four thousand two hundred sixty-eight feet of estate, and then six hundred feet on a labeled dam that is a boundary having width as the boundary between the famous property and the mill pot. And this is, and in North Carolina law, every deed in a party's chain of title has to include the property in question. If the famous property does not extend beyond the dam in that map, then the property in question is not their property. That map shows a dam, a monument, a boundary line having width, as the boundary that the dogger just has. It actually supersedes the nineteen sixty map. It makes it unnecessary to talk about what this dot or this circle or what have you was drawn on a map a hundred and three years ago.
So is the point being that on that map, because I think part of it is here, does not have a dot colored in or open? It's just not on that map at all?
Well, I don't think dots or circles have anything to do with this case. And I don't believe that the surveyors or any of the lawyers have given testimony that they do. And also, I don't think it matters whether the water oak was in the water or on the dam. Because what the water oak signifies on the nineteen sixty map is where the run of the Hookey Swamp, which is the boundary for the dogger. In fact, it was the boundary for L.B. Fleming. L.B. Fleming, when he bought the property in nineteen sixty, bought it from Nancy J. Best. Nancy J. Best bought the same property in eighteen seventy-five from W.R. Bowers. And the description in the deed to buy from Bowers and Best and from Best to Fleming starts at Brew's branch, goes down to the run of the Hookey Swamp, up the step line, up the run of the Hookey Swamp, to Chapel Run, to a road, and then back to the beginning. And it's shown on this map. And the boundary is not, it is the run of the Hookey Swamp. And what this map shows is the run of the Hookey Swamp goes up to the dam where the water oak is, then up the pond run, to Chapel Run. That's the boundary. The boundary is not water oak.
The boundary of the larger tract.
Of the larger tract. But that is the extension, extent of the property.
And that's the extent of the property. I get confused because nor they're on the best map that go up, but that's the eastern boundary, the higher, larger tract.
Right, this is the eastern boundary. The property that is owned by the dogger just is from Lot Seven dam, Lot Sixteen dam. The property of Tanniger is all Lots Eight and Nine, and as long as the base.
Your client was a beneficiary of the summary judgment ruling in the trial court. This court has said in Cuss versus Casey that discrepancies and contradictions of this nature in this case are better reconciled by a jury instead of a court. How do you figure Cuss versus Casey would apply in this case under those circumstances?
Well, the, I consider the Bible of legal state law. Well, the, I consider it viable of real estate law that James Webster's famous plea from 1971 that has been continued through revisions and updates to act of nineteen, uh, twenty eighteen. The boundary is a, is an issue of law. What is the boundary? So the boundary that's an issue here is the dam. Why is it the dam? It draws the map in 1916 study course.
The boundary is a legal question, the ownership is a factual question.
That's right. But the boundary line is also a legal question in that, in Webster, which has been decided and approved for alleys and roads and railroads and springs for any boundary that has width, where the person that creates the boundary and subdivides and sells the lots owns on both sides of that boundary, a boundary having width as a map. By calling the law, it's the center of the boundary, it's where the boundary line is.
Well, that's only with D. I mean, we don't have a case that, that answer it would. Do we have any case where there's only a map? And this court has held that just the map, if there is a drawn on in this case, like a dam or a creek or something like that, that regardless of where the map may indicate, a corner may be, where to go to the center line.
Well, what I would, I would, that type of move is, Webster also says that a reference and a conveyance to a flat or a map for the purpose of describing the land, the map is read into the D. There is, there is a written description. It's that map.
We don't have, we don't have what the grand tour would say, whether it was to a state in the high, uh, water line. The dam itself and the swamp or the mill pond, they're not generally per se the boundary. So it really depends on how you interpret the state. I know the water oak is being referenced as a way to interpret that. But this, this is, this case is about interpreting that map. But yes, you read it into the Ds, but you don't know what to read into the Ds because there's not a precise description that says to the dam with the dam or to the pond, high water, water with the high water mark. We don't have that in this case.
Mr. Fleming subdivided his, he walked, you know, eight hundred and seventy acres of land. And he subdivided it into seventeen halls. People do that all the time, you know, they subdivide neighborhoods. The deeds to those neighborhoods don't have a lease and balance description in their deeds. They, they have a lot. That lot that is on the map is a court process and that is the description in the deeds. The, the question I think you're asking is, how do you interpret the map? And my response to that is, it's under common law, it's under common law. When the boundary is created and has width, there's a presumption.
But doesn't that statement, and again, my mom always tell me because I'm a utility lawyer and not, not a real estate lawyer, doesn't that statement assume that the dam is the boundary?
Well, that's what the map said.
Well, that's, that's your intention. Hang on, just a second because I'm, hopefully you know a lot about this than I do. But I mean, I, I understand your argument as to what is the exterior boundary of a larger tract. I get that. But it seems to me that the issue that we've got before us is in essence, if you look at this Best Farm map, and we have a very long line dividing lot seven from lot eight that goes to the periphery of the, of lot. Really, is you, where does that lot line go?
Well, the lot line-
I didn't answer that very, didn't answer that very clearly, but I hope at least the gist of the question is clear.
But the lot line continues to characterize the run of the Hookey Swamp. And the run of the Hookey Swamp is shown on the 1916 map where, where the, where the pond run meets the dam and where the, the Hookey Swamp runs meets the dam from the bottom. So that shows where the boundary lies, that the termination of lot eight or lot sixteen is. So the property that, the, the boundary has a double line between sixteen and pond, and it's got the word written under the map with an arrow to the dam. And I don't know how the surveyor should have pointed out that as D's boundary either. And it is confirmed by the map of the Dorritges' property. It's section three, it's the division D ever airs map. This is his family's division of his family's property. Mr. Everthai paid, the family had maps made of the property. This is one of four maps that were recorded in book twelve, that book twelve, and four different maps in how tax cameras. This is what, this is, this is D. And it shows the same boundary line that's on the Best Farm map with Kerry Smith to a point and then along the dam. Again, it labels the dam as the boundary.
So is it, you're contingent that the labeling of the water oak is not intended to, is it signify a boundary?
I think that the, the water oak is showing where the run of the Hookey Swamp meets the dam. I don't believe that it is necessarily a point, a corner. I believe it's just marking where the surveyor said that the run of the Hookey Swamp caused the dam.
And do I understand currently from your answer earlier to Justice Lee's question that you agree with the plaintiffs that this is an issue of law for the, for the court to decide, where the boundary is based on the 1916 map?
Only, well, I do agree that it's an issue of law, but as by the law is, that every deed has to include property. And the deeds that the Dorritges have use this map, use the ever map. And their boundary on the ever map is the dam.
But, but isn't it true that someone can only convey what they actually own? And so if we were to find that the 1916 map has the boundary line at the high water mark, a subsequent map can't come along and change what the boundary is?
There's no high water mark showing on the 1916 map. There is no high water mark showing on this map except along these lots eight and nine where, where it's showing the edge of the pond. That's the only place that there is a, a high water mark. On the dam, there is a high water mark.
Well, I have another question about the 1916 map, if I may. How do you explain the three hundred foot gap between the end of the dam and the high water mark that the boundary lot makes? Because that doesn't appear to be shown on the 1916 map.
There is a three hundred feet that I see on this map at all. There's not a, there's not a call for three hundred feet on the 1916 map.
Well, I do see a, a gap between the open circle of the stake on land and then the end of the dam there. And the picture seems to show there's a gap there.
Well, that, that wouldn't be three hundred feet between that stake. If you look at the scaling, the scale of one inch was five hundred feet. That's, that's a very small space. And I don't think that has any bearing. The dam is the boundary between sixteen and eight. The stake is the boundary between, shows the end of the line, just what that shows, the end of the line. The mark here may, may or may not be the end of the dam. This road, white, goes down to that point and then goes along top of that. So it's not just the dam, it's also the road on top of it.
So if, if the question were the line between, I believe it's lot seven and lot eight, then are your clients only claiming to the center line of the White Mill Road? Or do they say that the White Mill Road is simply drawn on there and that that would not be the boundary line? Well, look, look at where seven and eight, you see White Mill Road. There's a distance between where the road, uh, between seven and eight. It looks like it almost gets to and then does get to the boundary line. And then it crosses over into lot sixteen and lot eight. But that mutual corner of eight, seven, and sixteen, my question is, if the dispute were the land above that, would your clients only claim to the center of White Mill Road as opposed to, say, and no, it's the boundary line itself and not the monument that should control it?
Well, with boundary, the boundary is-
No, I'm talking about all the way to the bottom, right where your pin is there. Go back up.
But the road here continues beyond the stake and then onto the dam.
I'm talking about above the stake. If, if, I know it's not, but if the dispute were about who owned or which side of that road, would your client be saying, well, it must be the center line of the road as opposed to what the line would be?
I think it would be the center line of the road because that's monument having-
Well, look, look at that map. I don't think you want to say that because that road gets way into lot eight. I mean, if you look at that, where the road is located, my goodness, your clients would lose lots and lots of acreage. I don't, I'm not sure that that's what you want to say. Now, look at the other map and look at the Mill Road. I mean, the White Mill Road runs, you know, for a portion of the distance. I, I don't think you want to say it's the center line would be the boundary line.
The boundary between eight and seven, this line, forty-two hundred sixty-eight feet.
Despite where the road might come in.
Despite where the road might come in. And then beyond that forty-two hundred sixty-eight feet, then it appears to become the dam.
Well, there's a short distance between that corner and the dam. You say it may not be three hundred feet. I do think most evidence indicates it's around three hundred feet from that corner to the dam. Isn't the road, that's the boundary line there?
If, 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 if the map shows, well, the line extends from the forty-two hundred sixty-eight feet straight, the pond on one side of it. So I would say that, that that would be the boundary line because that's what's shown on the map. But then once you reach the pond, it's going, I mean, the, the dam, the dam is, is the boundary having width, which is, and which, which, on the surface that is common law.
All right, you can finish, I apologize for interrupting. The, the effect of the trial court's decision, the court of appeals decision, at least if I'm reading it correctly, and this kind of case, I always wonder if I'm reading things correctly, would be to give your client, in essence, a relatively thin strip of property along the water edge. Is that right? Why would somebody divide property that far?
Because it would.
Well, I'm just trying to think, practically speaking, what, why would somebody subdividing your property? And I realize this is a hundred years ago and I realize we may think about developing different now. But why would somebody not, instead of renting the owner of the walk or the, and the property all the way to the water, why would they give somebody else, you know, that has a different tract of property just a thin slice along the edge of the water?
Well, you have a dam, it has to be maintained, of course. And you've got, but, but the real, the real issue is what did Mr. Fleming do? Not, we really can't, I can't theorize why he did it. But I'm saying that's what the map did. And that, I believe that most real estate practitioners would agree with that. The other thing is that, there's other evidence that shows that that is correct. There are eight leases issued by the state of North Carolina in nineteen forty, as of 1946. You'll see a patch to the, uh, right, uh-
I've not looked, not looked because leases do the extent that I understand.
Well, what, what those leases were, this is state leased the pond. The impoundment is the land under the pond. Leased the impoundment under the pond from the people that owned it. There were eight leases. All of those were people that owned property on the east and west side of the pond. None of them, no leases were issued or obtained from the evidence or the voters, the Dorritges, the Dorritges and the families. So the state didn't consider that they owned the pond. They did not own the impoundment. They did not own, and, and so, and so they had, they did not have access that they leased to, so that the public could cross the property and finish the pond.
I understand Mr. Garble's argument correctly. He's got a great period of time to tell me I misunderstood it, if I did. His argument is this, the reason I don't have, the reason that my clients don't have a lease in their chain of title like these other folks do is because we never claimed any interest in the water or in the pond. And therefore it makes no sense for, it makes perfect sense that these other folks who do here to have ownership down to the swamp line to these, to such a lease before need not to be. That seems to be regarded, or what's wrong with this argument?
Well, pause it. If, if they did have access to the pond, then they would have participated in this program and leased their access across their property to the pond.
Well, that's, at least if I understood the leases, please tell me if I misunderstood them. The leases run from wherever the, the swamp line is up to the high water mark of the properties that are subject to it, not owned to their property. Is that right?
No, not at all.
Okay, that's fine, that's fine, may I ask?
What, what the leases do is they allow the public to cross each one of these lots. And also from the other side, because the shields, the shields that sold the property to the Zoological Society owned the property on the west side of the Hookey Swamp. And they leased, there were eight leases. These were people that had access to the pond and the impoundment. They not only leased pond and impoundment to the future, but they had to, that they agreed to allow the public to cross their property, including this Mill Road, cross their property to access the pond.
There's, there's not a dispute that the plaintiffs are the ones that built the boat ramp and utilized the boat ramp?
I don't think there's any evidence of that.
Well, I know it's in an affidavit where they say that a, um, one of the Dorritges in his affidavit said that his family built it in the 1940s and used it.
Um, I, I also, if, if he gave an affidavit on that, I don't recall that. But the, but the, um, it was a fifty-year lease run. So it would be kind of, it wouldn't be surprising if people didn't have an ownership and just might put a ramp for this purpose. After all, the lease has continued until 1996. So if they build a ramp in 1940, it would be fifty-six years old at the, at the termination of the lease. The state terminated the lease because the, the dam continually gets washed out and has to be repaired.
You admittedly rely on presumption that you are being favored by what the instruments do for your client in terms of the ownership of the property in dispute here. Of course, the dam, if you believe the plaintiff's survey, is entirely on their property. And a lot of what our learned colleague, Justice Erwin, said earlier about the fact that the way that this land is so narrow in terms of what your client is claiming, wouldn't that in effect be sufficient to defeat that presumption, arguably such that there is a genuine issue as to material fact?
It doesn't defeat it when an alley is the boundary between two pieces of property. A very narrow alley, the center line is the center of the alley, or a ditch, the center line of the ditch is the boundary, or a street, or a public highway, or a stream, or non- avenue, non-avenue water.
You're looking to some other case law like this case?
Yes, sir. And I think I found it in my briefcase, that I got another text of the alley property.
I'm talking about as to the factual circumstances here. Are you saying that those matters exist here in this case as well? In terms of the examples that you give?
If, if, if the dam is portrayed as a, as a boundary monument, and the common law is a boundary monument having with, if the person that creates the boundary had access to it, and Mr. Fleming did, he had the owner and the north and south of the dam, then the common law would be, nothing else appearing, that the center line of that monument, the center line of the dam or the road or the alley or the stream or the creek, would be where the boundary is located. And this has been the law of North Carolina for hundreds of years.
And where does the water oak reference come in at all then?
Well, the water oak is on, is marked on the survey as a border. And it tells you where the run of the Hokey Swamp causes the dam because that's the west, the easternmost boundary of Fleming's property. And it's, and it's showing, the map shows pond road comes to the water oak under the dam, and then the run of the Hokey Swamp goes below the dam. This, all this is a border.
You're not finding, you're not seeing at all in, in your estimation then, that the reference to the water oak is sufficient to establish some type of reference for the boundary line because of the presumption that's in favor of your clients, that the dam is a monument, that therefore the presumption is that the monument would have the line run through its middle? Is that correct?
Right. Also, it, it receives, it's also confirmed by the map that is in the plaintiff's chain of title. Where the pond, where the dam was again defined, it's decided to be 600 feet off to where the run of the Hokey Swamp goes, which I think county, uh, learning counsel said that water oak was about 600 feet down the dam, so that makes sense. It's a border. The, uh, there is also in Webster and a great view of baseball, that where you have a flat, flats are routinely, and they have been for years, used as a lot, block number or a lot number and incorporated in a deed without any further mention. And in fact, that's what has happened in the titles of both appellate and appellate of my, uh, paper.
On page 47, that is the description of the property owing to this present generation of owners. And take a look at it because it's more than a reference to the trailer survey. Trailer survey is incorrect to look at it. Modern surveys, the one that shows one, course of order, perhaps two, the one that shows is way out of place. But take a look at this language, especially with this fourth part where it says bounded by. Back in those days, surveying was not inaccurate and everybody, you just station your, on a local society, they'd set bounded by best and so on and so on. That was a legitimate way, that's in the case law, of locating property. And there are several other references in there. It doesn't stand in a trailer map, which is inaccurate. Second point is that, Justice Erwin, you're exactly right, on page 150 of the record, is this lease, it's in the same title of the defendant. It's a lease from that owner back then, Miss Smith, in 1946, and it's to the State of North Carolina.
What do you, what do you say in Mr. Roundtree's reply to my question, which was a part of the purpose of this certain leases, was to give the public access to the pond and in any event that your client owned the edge of the water if you were subject to these leases, just like everybody else did?
The leases were just the water. And the doctor's family, that people come across their land. They graciously opened their land and it's in the record. They opened their land and that people come across, because they had the people to knock it out to the water. They hung it up to the water. They built the boat ramp and they let people come across and use it. And the state cooperated by staying here for water. You guys can go fish your boat.
Oh yes, oh yes, oh yes. Supreme Court, North Carolina, will be in recess until 11:00 a.m. God save the state and this honorable court.
Good morning and thank you for coming to hear arguments before our Supreme Court of North Carolina. Before we begin, I wanted to explain a little bit about how the court system works in North Carolina. Our state court system is established by the Constitution of North Carolina and our courts exist to resolve disputes and to make sure that the rights of the parties are protected. Now, courts here have two types of cases, criminal and civil. We heard a civil case earlier this morning, a case that you're about to hear is a criminal matter. Criminal cases are instituted when someone is accused of a crime. Prosecutors acting on behalf of the state begin a criminal case when they believe they have enough evidence to show that a particular person has committed a particular crime and they believe they can show that beyond the region they're about. Defense attorneys present any evidence they have that cast doubt on the guilt of the defendant. They will also present any legal arguments for the defendant and point out any legal mistakes that, in their opinion, they believe prosecution made. Under both the U.S. Constitution and the North Carolina Constitution, a person accused of a crime generally has the right to a jury trial. Juries do not decide questions of law, but they find facts, meaning that they hear the evidence, they hear testimony from witnesses, and they make a determination as to what they believe actually happened. Criminal trials end with a verdict, either guilty or not guilty. If the defendant is found not guilty, then they're free to go. If a defendant is found guilty, then some type of punishment is imposed. That could be probation, it could be a fine, it could be imprisonment. Civil cases are what most people think of as lawsuits. These cases involve one party suing the other party, usually involves private parties, although the state and the federal government can sue or be sued. The suing party in a civil case is called the plaintiff and the party who gets sued is called the defendant. Usually, the plaintiff wants money from the defendant, but they may sue for some other type of compensation. They may ask the court to force someone to do something or to not do something. For example, they may ask the court to direct a person to abide by the terms of the contract. Unlike a criminal case, a losing party in a civil case is not subject to imprisonment. Civil cases end in a judgment, which establishes whether the defendant owes anything to the plaintiff and if so, what and how much. A judgment in a civil case can also impose an injunction, which orders the defendant to do or not do something. After the trial is finished, whether it's a civil trial or a criminal trial, the losing side can appeal to a higher court. There are two levels of appellate review in North Carolina, or two levels of appellate court in North Carolina, the Court of Appeals and the Supreme Court that you're going to see today. Appellate courts, unlike the trial courts, don't hold trials. Instead, they review what happened in the trial court to see if all proper procedures were followed and to ensure that no legal errors occurred. The lawyers lay out the issues that the court must decide and they'll describe why they believe their client should prevail. Unlike juries, who, as I mentioned, decide questions of fact, appellate courts specialize in deciding questions of law, such as the meaning of a statute or the meaning of a provision of the Constitution. In general, they trust the trial court to have decided where the facts actually were. Now, all cases are guaranteed at least one appeal, except in a few very serious cases, such as if the trial court imposed capital punishment, the appeal would first go to the Court of Appeals of North Carolina rather than straight to the Supreme Court. At the Court of Appeals, every case is reviewed by a panel of three judges and they decide issues by majority vote. A second appeal to the State Supreme Court is only guaranteed if the Court of Appeal judges disagree on an issue. Otherwise, to reach the Supreme Court, the losing party would have to request or petition that the Supreme Court take their case and the Supreme Court would have the option of deciding to take the case or not to take the case. There are seven justices on the Supreme Court and they decide cases by majority vote. A decision by the Supreme Court of North Carolina is final as to any issue of state law. If a case involves an issue of federal law, then the parties may have an additional right of appeal to the Supreme Court of the United States in Washington, D.C. Today, you are going to have a chance to observe an argument in front of our State Supreme Court. Now, we normally sit in Raleigh, but in celebration of the 200th anniversary of the Supreme Court of North Carolina, we have the opportunity to travel throughout the state to bring the court to you. And we're very excited about having this opportunity. I hope you enjoy seeing us in action. At this time, I would like to introduce you to our Senior Associate Justice, Paul Newby, and he is going to briefly speak to us about his road to the Supreme Court.
Thanks, Amy. Thanks for that great information. We are so honored to be with y'all. Do y'all realize how much history? You're living in the midst of? I go around the state talking to folks about fundamental principles since 1776, our state constitution says, there are frequent recurrence of fundamental principles absolutely necessary to preserve blessings of liberty. Nobody knows what that bottom yellow ribbon on our state flag is, April 12, 1776. Folks, that is the seed that sprouted into the independence of our nation. We were the first state provincial legislature to authorize our delegates at the Continental Congress to vote for independence. And that happened here. It's the Halifax Resolve. So when we had an opportunity to go throughout the state, and we received a lot of requests to go places, we wanted to be sure we came to Halifax because of the historical significance that lives in your area. And I looked around this courtroom, I see one, two, three, four former chief justices and one former associate justice, Justice Meyer. My wife is from Overland Wilson. Whenever I get to Eastern North Carolina, I feel like I'm at home. Thank y'all so much for your hospitality. I've been on the court since 2004, been practicing law since 1980. My mom and dad were schoolteach, my mom was a schoolteacher, my dad was an hourly worker, the lawyers in the family. Newbies have been in North Carolina since 1700, they were Quakers. Been here a long time, never did anything, all right? So as, as a child, they encouraged me and through Boy Scouts, I got introduced to the possibility of thinking about law school. I had a citizenship here, had a counselor who was the lawyer in Jamestown, Jamestown's little town in Guilford County. And he encouraged me to think about going to law school. So the only four years I spent out of state were the four years I went to Duke. And then I went over to North Carolina. And then I went to UNC Law School where I met my wonderful life of 36 years. Been in private practice, was a corporate attorney, was an assistant United States attorney for the Eastern District of North Carolina. And in 2004, when an open seat occurred on the State Supreme Court, I ran and was fortunate enough to win. No doubt Scooby Doo, we vote for Newby, carry the day. And fortunate enough to win again in 2012. So I am the old guy. I'm the senior associate. And again, we're so honored to be with you.
And good morning again. We will be getting started very shortly, just in the next, next few minutes or so. And again, thank you so much for hosting us and taking part in this viewing of oral arguments today.
All rise. Oh yes, oh yes, oh yes. In sitting for this fact of business. God save the state and the honorable court.
Good morning. The court is real to sit in here in Halifax County, even though the microphone is fighting with him right now. We're delighted to be here today and so thankful to everybody for all their generosity and graciousness in hosting the court here in Halifax today. I would like to introduce to you the other members of the court. I'm Sherri Beasley, Chief Justice. To my right is Justice, Senior Associate Justice Paul Newby. To my left is Justice Robin Hudson. To Justice Newby's right is Justice Sam J. Irvin the fourth. Justice Hudson's left is Justice Michael Morgan. To Justice Irvin's right is Justice Anita Earle. And on the far left is Justice Mark Davis. We are indeed delighted to be here today. The court calls State versus Lewis and would ask that Mr. Don Gray come forward.
Good morning, Chief Justice Beasley and Associate Justices. When this court reviews search warrants, the legality of search warrants, it gives magistrate determinations of probable cause great deference. The court's only task being to ensure that their magistrate had a substantial basis for concluding probable cause existed to issue a warrant. In this case, the Court of Appeals erred by failing to recognize the more than substantial basis given in the affidavit for probable cause to search 7085 Laurinburg Road in Rayford, North Carolina. This caused the Court of Appeals to suppress evidence related to a string of four armed robberies and related kidnappings in neighboring Hope and Johnston counties in September and October 2014. The suppression of the evidence in turn meant that the Court of Appeals had to vacate defendant Lewis's multiple criminal convictions arising out of the robberies. The Court of Appeals reached this erroneous result because it failed to keep this court's holding in the recent case of State B Almond, that irrespective of whether any facts in an affidavit directly tied a suspected criminal to a, to a particular home. Nonetheless, probable cause to search the home may exist where the magistrate has a substantial basis from the facts to conclude that there is a fair probability that evidence of the crime or crimes will be found in the home. I'd like to briefly go through the specific facts in the affidavit that the magistrate found sufficient for probable cause and then discuss the very hyper, hyper technical reason that the Court of Appeals disagreed. Detective William Hart of the Hope County Sheriff's Department's affidavit explained, one, that in the month preceding his submission of the affidavit, a man wearing a distinctive blue face covering and armed with a handgun. blue face covering and armed with a handgun robbed three Hope County stores on three different days, each time calmly and coolly directing staff to hand over cash kept in secure locations and then fleeing. Two, that on the first of these Hope County robberies, the perpetrator had been seen fleeing in a dark blue Nissan Titan. And three, that not 30 days later, in the same general locality and on the very morning of the day the affidavit was submitted, again, a man wearing a distinctively face covering armed with a handgun committed before such robbery. But as the affidavit explained, this time, law enforcement not only identified a man fleeing the scene in a new Ford Kia Optima as defendant Robert Lewis based on a prior, this is a police officer's identification based on a prior run-in with Mr. Lewis. They also, within a few hours, were able to find and arrest Mr. Lewis back in Hope County at a house in the front yard of which sat a dark blue Nissan Titan, matching the description of the vehicle that was used to flee the first Hope County robbery. Now, a common sense view, the state argues of these facts screams out that this location was the criminal refuge of a serial armed robber and therefore that it probably contained evidence of these robberies in the home.
But there was nothing in the search warrant affidavit that even linked the defendant to the home and linked him arguably, as I'm sure you would embrace, to the vehicles, but nothing to the house except for the fact that he was arrested there. So what would be the link?
Yes, Justice Morgan. I think this actually gets to the fundamental logical flaw of the Court of Appeals opinion, what the link is that's required. The nexus that's required for probable cause is not one between the residence and the defendant. It's between the residence and the crime that's under investigation. And so there is no hard and fast requirement. It's never been said that residency is categorically required to find probable cause. Does that answer your question?
Well, it's a start, but in terms of talking about the fact that the vehicles, the Kia and the other vehicle, the truck, were there at the residence at which the stepfather of the defendant lived, but yet there was nothing apparently to determine with absolute certainty at least, that the defendant resided there also. He did emerge from the home to check the mailbox, but other than that, there was nothing that tied him residentially to the home. He could have just been a visitor there arguably. So I'm looking for the nexus that establishes the probability that there would likely be the evidence from these robberies that would be in the home.
Justice Morgan, the proximity of the robbery that occurred that morning and the presence of the vehicle matched the description from the first robbery and the arrest of the likely suspect of the robberies, which the defendant in the briefs conceded he was likely committed then, those all go to establishing a fair probability that evidence is going to be in there. There is no, this court has said in State v. Riggs, that there's no specific category or quantity of evidence that's required. And again, we give deference to the magistrate's determination on these issues. But I think, aside from the deference, the fact that they acted so quickly, the officers had found this individual, who again, had been personally identified based on a prior period run-in, that's not in dispute. The fact that they found him there and the car was there, I would, the state would argue, provides probable cause.
So your argument then is, let's just talk about the house for a second. Your argument then is, in the event that a person identified as the perpetrator of the crime is found at a particular residence within some number of hours following the commission of the crime, that fact and that fact alone is sufficient to support the issuance of the search warrant authorizing the search of the house?
No, Justice Ervin.
Okay, that's kind of what I really got out of your brief. What exactly, what facts in the affidavit, in your view, support a search of this residence?
It certainly, the state would argue, is not alone the fact that the individual was caught there within a recent.
What else is there other than that we've got to leave outside?
And the state will be candid, there is only an affidavit reference to the first vehicle, not the Kia, although it was, he later learned there.
Sorry, that didn't.
That's okay. And the mechanics of the crime involved are really important. This is a robbery. People flee from robberies and typically, if it's within a short amount of time of the robbery, you can expect, I think, a common sense view that there's going to be evidence in a particular home. But that question.
Nearly because a person and the vehicle are present at that time?
Yes.
All right, so what you're asking us to hold then, and I've always found, to understand what people are asking me to hold, I've got a better shot at getting it right. What you're asking us to hold in essence is the presence of the defendant within 12 to 18 hours after the commission of a robbery, plus the fact that a vehicle apparently used in that robbery was also present there, or used in a different robbery. That's enough to justify the issuance of a search warrant authorizing the search of the house?
Yes, Your Honor. A common sense view of the facts requires that hold based on this court's previous holding.
But that's in essence what we would have to hold in order to rule the.
That is the basic.
Mr. Don Gray, just so we're all clear, am I correct, the only reference to the house at all in the search warrant affidavit is the notation that an arrest warrant was served on the defendant there?
Yes, that's correct.
So we don't even know what time the arrest warrant was served, correct?
No, but we know at the most that it would have been, so we know that the robbery occurred that morning. If it occurred at 12:01 a.m. that morning, the arrest, the search warrant, the arrest occurred there, the defendant's brief conceded around 1 p.m., so 12 to 13 hours at most.
And as you know, the defendant is challenging findings of fact, three, seven, eight, and nine, from the trial court's order. Do you concede that those findings were based on evidence separate and apart from all that's contained in the affidavit?
I would have to look and specify those facts, but I think I can make a point that answers the question without having to get into the details of it. I think if you look at the trial court's order, on the last page of it, this is in the defendant's brief, defendant's briefs both have the order at the back of it. It specifically says that the probable cause was based on the affidavit. And then it goes on to say in the later paragraph that notwithstanding the affidavit, the Detective Timothy Kavanaugh had authority to search the Kia on the property because of the plain view doctrine. That is not at issue, but that shows, the distinction that the trial court made, shows that the evidence that was, the facts that were put in the order relating, that came from the suppression hearing, were, only went to the trial court's conclusion as the plain view.
Would you agree that all we're looking at is whether the search warrant affidavit itself is sufficient?
Yes, that's the question.
And you mentioned Almond earlier, and Almond, wasn't it the case that the defendant had lied about where he lived?
That's true.
So we don't have anything like that, again, bringing the house to the court room?
No, but I think it's important to step back and think about just the salience of the facts that were involved here. There is no question, if viewed in this case, that the Smithfield Police Officer's identification of the person that was fleeing a robbery that morning, that matched all the motives I've run out of the previous robberies, was defendant Robert Lewis. They scrambled to find him. They find him at a nearby house in the county in which the three previous robberies had been committed. And there's a car outside that matches one of the first robberies.
Why aren't there any other explanations as to why he could have driven the car to that particular house?
There is, but again, as this court stated in State v. Almond, all that's required for probable cause is a substantial chance or probability that there is evidence of a particular crime in a location. And the state's position is then, the evidence that was in this affidavit was more than substantial, with more than a substantial basis supporting probable cause, irrespective of what other explanations the court could come up with. And in this particular case, I think it's important to recognize that the Court of Appeals didn't really give any particular reason, any principled reason for why residency per se mattered, notwithstanding all these other facts. In fact, I think getting in the territory of making residency so important is actually potentially going to be harmful to defendants, because if you look at State v. Campbell, all that the officer had there, and that was the case in which this court said that the search warrant was illegal, all the officer, a fine officer had there was the knowledge that particular individuals lived in a particular home and that they had sold drugs in unspecified other locations.
Well, I'm going to stay from Ms. Vanderburg, but I don't think she's arguing that residency is required.
Well, I think you're right, but I think that the Court of Appeals' decision took that half on the facts. And I think that the, there are no other, once you dispose of that explanation, which I don't think there's a good reasoning for in the Court of Appeals' decision, there are no other good reasons when you think about the totality of the circumstances to rule this warrant illegal.
Well, as I gave your opinion, the Court of Appeals was concerned more about what was in mind in the affidavit. They pointed to the fact that from the affidavit, that the Laurinburg Road house could have been someone else's, nothing more connection to defendant at all, that he visited the location without some indication in mind of. So really, the evidence is not enough to justify a search of the house, is what was not really at the root of what they're concerned about. Is that, that's not a concern for the state?
What the state focuses on is the statement by the court that there was a key piece of information missing, and this was explicit by the Court of Appeals. This is on, this is on page 12 of the slip opinion. It says, okay, as the state concedes, although Lewis resided at 7085 Laurinburg Road, this is a quote, "The affidavit does not say that. The only information the affidavit tied Lewis to 7085 Laurinburg Road is the statement that Hope County officers..." I don't want to waste our time. "In the opinion that, I know that there is a statement that says, what was missing," it uses the phrase "key information" from the affidavit, "was a statement by the affiant that after identifying Lewis as the suspect of the morning robbery, they searched records and determined that 7085 Laurinburg Road was his residence." So literally, what the Court of Appeals is saying is that that key piece of information aligns saying, "We saw Lewis, we searched records, we know he lives there," is what's missing. But given the deference, I mean, given the totality.
Well, I think they're making a leap there that may not be warranted. I think the Court of Appeals was just pointing out the fact that this information could and probably should have been in the search warrant affidavit, but wasn't.
The state would argue it's not a leap when the Court of Appeals was so explicit that it was a key piece of information missing and said that it was, that statement would have made the difference. I think there's no way to avoid that conclusion from the opinion. I had to search the court to focus on what the difference was in the Court of Appeals' opinion and what would have made the difference. And I think if you read the opinion carefully, that's what comes up, this statement that it wanted about.
If we're looking at the four corners of the affidavit, where the evidence is sufficient, but we have to look at what's not in it?
Yes.
Can you go on?
Yes, you do, but there has to be, there has to be a principled reason for stating that what you're saying was not in it matters to the totality of the circumstances. And in this case, the state argues, based on the fact that this man was identified and found and arrested, found there that day at a house with the car, matching the previous robberies in the front yard, it is enough. Another question to ask is, what more would residency have given to that? I mean, I think if you're looking for a statement in the cases that says that evidence of a robbery is likely to be in the house.
If there was evidence it was his residence, that would certainly make your inference a lot stronger.
Did the inference of evidence.
Since he was there, since there was a car from another robbery there, if you also had the fact that this was his residence, you would probably have a stronger inference that there would be property associated with robberies, building, building, in the absence of such a fact.
Sure, we would, but the question, of course, in this case, is whether this was.
I understand your argument is it's not determined.
Yes.
But it's not irrelevant, Lee.
It's not relevant, no. But if this is.
We just don't have it in this case.
In this particular case, but we have, as the state argues, plenty else to justify this.
Interestingly, in light of your candor, that the Court of Appeals does say that if the state had merely put the address of residence in the search warrant affidavit, that would have been sufficient, instead of the state trying to tie the defendant to the residence through the vehicles being parked there, what's your response to how easy a fix that would have been as compared to the fairly circuitous route that one must take in order to tie the defendant to that place as his residence?
The response is, from this court's holding in State v. Fernandez, that where the court recognized that this information often is going to be garnered hastily by law enforcement, given the imperants law enforcement, they're not always going to, you know, dot every i and every t that would lead to certainty, but all we're looking for is a substantial chance. And in this case, this is precisely the case where the prudence of that particular approach makes sense, because officers, you know, Smithfield Police Officers in Hope County Sheriff's Department identified this person very, very quickly and were able to arrest him within hours of the robbery.
Where would the haste have been in this circumstance? The officer did take pains to make sure that there was a lot of detail in terms, as you said, of the four robberies, with all that was circumstantially in tandem among all four of them. And yet, put everything in there except that being supposed to be the residence of the defendant, it doesn't seem like a case was issued here, although it sounds like you're trying to say that in the end.
Well, lack of perfection is another way to put it. I think we would be expecting too much and not consistent with this court's precedents to require perfection from officers, especially, again, when the totality of the circumstances in this case provides enough evidence to believe that there's a fair probability that evidence of the crime would be in the home.
So your position is, just to make, I make sure I understand, is that although the one most pertinent fact that could have been put in the search warrant affidavit, which is that this was indeed the residence of the defendant, that that should be put in perspective, in totality of the circumstances, with everything else that was in there exclusive of that most pertinent?
The state is not, it wouldn't concede that it's the most pertinent point. It is one among many factors involved in the case, but as I responded to Justice Ervin, it is something that is relevant, of course.
So if you disagree with the Court of Appeals that putting the address in the search warrant affidavit was the most pertinent point?
Absolutely, yes, the state does disagree with that.
So back to Justice Ervin's point about, as I hear the state arguing that in the, it's enough in the affidavit itself to say that that was found there, that that is probable cause with some of the other factors, but no specifically to that residence, to search that residence, then it could have been just a residence that he turned into the driveway of random. And that, as I understand it, the protection of having the officers come in search of residence are fairly important, and so we want to protect that sanctity unless there's a reason apparent on the affidavit.
Correct, but the state's position is that, the Court of Appeals, it's nowhere explicit what the principled reason was for its focus on residency, but it does appear, as Your Honor says, to be maybe based on this notion of the sanctity of the residence, which the state, of course, agrees with it, but.
Well, it's more that there has to be some connection between the evidence. Well, it's more that there has to be some connection between the evidence of the robbery and the residence before you can go in and search the residence, which can be fairly extensive, you know, what it does to the house itself.
That's correct. The state doesn't take lightly the intrusion that a search warrant imposes, but it's, I think, one helpful thing to do may be to compare Almond and the way that the, that this court tied the, the individuals that, that were, that had been, that it concluded were, that the affidavit stated were drug dealers and engaged in drug-related, the way that this court tied those people to the house. There was, there was no statement that they, they were, that they searched records and found that they were residents. There was a statement in the affidavit that officers spoke to the individual's mother, who said they lived at 444 Acres Drive. They corroborated her assertion by comparing the appearance of the house with what she said it looked like, and then there was a car parked out front that was registered to one of these individuals. Now, just because there's a car parked out front, one might argue, doesn't mean that someone is a resident there, but that was enough to, for the Court of, for this court to infer that they lived there and then to make further inference that drug dealers, because of the experience and training with the officer, keep evidence, will have, tend to have evidence of, of drugs.
We're also missing that here, right? There aren't, there is no testimony from the officer in the affidavit that, that based on his experience as a law enforcement officer, proceeds from the robberies were likely to be in this house.
That's correct, and this goes back to a point that I was going to, going to make earlier, which I did not finish. If the court is looking, this is, there have to be some things that are so obvious they don't have to be stated. If the court's looking for a statement in one of the cases that says that someone flees a robbery is going to be likely to have stuff when it's found a few hours later in a house relating to the robbery, that's, the state would argue that that, it's unlikely to find that anywhere because it's something that does not need to be stated. We're using common sense, which again is what we're applying in, in these situations. The, the standard is set at the totality of the circumstances because on the one hand, you want to make sure that officers that have done a good investigation of the case have the ability to continue that based, you know, and for crime, based on not, not having beyond reasonable doubt or anything like that, but based on having enough. And so, that's the, that's the important thing here, is that you don't want to push the line too far the other way or, or, or it ends up hamstringing law enforcement's ability.
What you're thinking about this case, at least to me, is here the officers had done the work and they had the evidence, they just didn't put it in the affidavit.
Of the, of the home being the residence of-
And I know we're not at the Kia yet, but even the fact that the Kia was parked in, in the driveway, so that's two key pieces of information we also had, we're good police work, we just didn't put it in the affidavit.
Yes, but I think it would be in the state for the court to focus on those two particular things rather than take a step back and see everything else that was in, in the affidavit.
But again, isn't that the distinction between this situation, this affidavit and the one that happened in Almond, where that impression was in the affidavit, that they had talked to the woman who told them where they lived and that, and his experience?
Yes, the state's arguments that, that is, Justice, that what we have here is certainly comparable to that level of, of confidence that, that the court held in Almond, that the person, the individuals lived in that house, that the individuals were connected to the home in such a way that was relevant, that mattered. Even if they couldn't, even if the affidavit didn't say he was a resident there, all the other circumstances, finding him there with the car parked that matched the other robberies, are, the state arguing, enough to establish probable cause. Again, looking at, I think it's important for the court to look at all the statements in its precedents that say, that talk about the realities of law enforcement that, that we're dealing with and affect that, that probability and substantial chance is what matters. And yet, what has to ask themselves, if you were faced with this situation and, and an officer finds defendant Lewis there, would, would, which, even if you didn't know that it was his residence, would you think, hey, this place probably doesn't have evidence of the robbery?
Well, back to Justice Morton's question, if you knew it was his residence, surely you would put that in the affidavit.
Yes.
Wouldn't you?
Yes, but I think it, it is going a step too far, that's not consistent with this court's precedents, to punish law enforcement, to include that in a statement, given that the rest of the evidence in the case. I'd like to reserve that.
Good morning, Navy Police Court. I'm here with Glenn Girding, impelled defender, and I'm Captain Vanenver from Durham, here representing Mr. Robert Lewis, and I'd like to save 10 minutes for the court. This case squarely presents a vital constitutional issue, whether our courts will enforce a check on the state's ability to search private property. Search warrants protect all of us from violations of privacy by requiring a layer of objective review by neutral and detached magistrate to decide whether there's sufficient reason to violate an individual's private space. The impelled court provides a further level of review where creative uncertainty can be enforced. On behalf of Mr. Lewis, I'm asking this court to hold the state to its Fourth Amendment burden, establishing probable cause to an independent magistrate before searching private property. The blank letter law central to this case is that there must be facts and circumstances in the search warrant affidavit which implicate the premises to be searched. And I'd like to start with the house and then hopefully have time to move to the Kia as well. As the state has already said, this affidavit has set a lot of detail about four different robberies that appear to have been done by the same person and had a potential identification of Robert Lewis as the person who committed the fourth. Most of the affidavit explains all of that information, but what it doesn't do is connect anything to this house. The only mention of the house is that Mr. Lewis was arrested there. And looking back, after you read the suppression hearing testimony, you understand that the officers probably did have plenty of information. He came out of the house, he went to the mailbox, his stepfather said he lived there, but all of that has to be erased and we have to take a disciplined look at just what's in the affidavit. And the affidavit only said he was arrested there. As the Court of Appeals said, there are many scenarios that would explain that he could have stopped by to visit his step parents perhaps, or maybe he was just arrested driving down the street and he was pulled in front of this random house. It doesn't tell you. He could, you know, he could have been walking down the street. They didn't include any facts at all. And if you're gonna let that be enough to search this house-
I think, I think your colleague, when I asked him specifically what his contention is to what the basis created or necessary probable cause was, was one, the fact that the defendant had been identified as the perpetrator of the robbery some 12, 18 hours earlier, second, that he was taken into custody at this location, and thirdly, that there's a vehicle used in a different, or is there a vehicle matching, similar to a vehicle used in the earlier robbery?
Correct.
Application sits more than just stopping at some random location.
Right, well, that's the second fact, is that there's a Nissan truck parked in the driveway. So, so those are the facts-
The reason I bring all that up is we're not, because I understand we're supposed to look at it in its entirety, not these parts.
Right, but that, but you just named the entirety.
Right.
He may have done it.
Well, there's certain probable cause to believe that he might have at least-
Well, sure.
-been cast accountable.
Sure, and that's the, you know, we're basing, believing what the officer said, you know, we haven't watched the videos, I knew that, right. He may have done it, he was arrested here, and there's a blue truck that is possibly similar to one used in one of the robberies one month earlier. It's not connected by a registration, a tag, or witness identification. Those are all of that that the state had in this case. And I would contend that's nowhere close to allowing a search of this home. Now, maybe it's frustrating knowing that the officers, if you pay attention to their suppression testimony, seem to have had a lot more information that they could have included in the warrant, but that happens to have the issue.
So, how do you distinguish, um, State v. Almond?
So, Almond, the mother of these, they went to the mother's house first and she said, "They don't live here, they live over here." So, you've got the mom saying that's his house, that's probably enough by itself, plus then they went there and saw a truck or a car and checked it, and actually it was registered to one of the defendants. So, they have both of those facts, which this court found were sufficient to support cause. We don't have anyone saying he lived there.
But those were in the affidavit.
They were in the affidavit, yes. Here the affidavit only says he was arrested there and there's a blue truck nearby. It doesn't, it says "at the residence," it doesn't say anything more.
So, just to be clear, you're not arguing that the Court of Appeals was by implication sending that to the affidavit that he resided there, that residence is required?
Well, I mean, you have to connect something to the house. I mean, and here's a confusion maybe that this residency requirement issue. There are cases where, say there's drug dealing going on in a house that's been observed. You can get a search warrant for that house and you don't have to show who lives there, but you can search that location because there might be evidence of the crime. So, that's sort of a different kind of case. But here, there's nothing going on at this Lorimer Road house. Nobody's saying the crime was committed there, so you have to tie something to it.
When you say you have to tie something to it, the state's position is that you can tie the presence of the vehicle that matches the description of the previous robberies and connect that with the house expressly with relation to temporal proximity, as Justice served saying, 12, 18 hours before there'd been the robbery, and the totality of the circumstances. What would be your response to the state's position that it is sufficient to tie the presence of the vehicle in such a close amount of time to the residence itself in terms of the defendant being connected with that residence?
Right. I think it's too far away in time. I mean, first of all, we don't know it's the same vehicle that was used, it's just one that matches it, and that robbery was 30 days or so beforehand. Now, if it was, in fact, registered to Mr. Lewis, maybe that would give you something a little closer. It wasn't, they just said it was a dark blue Nissan truck.
So, is it a time circumstance? It is a circumstance of the vehicle may match, although in the affidavit, as I recall, the vehicle identification number or VIN number was there, also a pretty complete presentation of some of the features of the vehicle?
The registration and VIN information was not in the affidavit of probable cause. It was on a separate page, we haven't talked about that yet, but in the, so on my read, appendix page five is where attachment C is, the affidavit of probable cause. That's the sworn testimony by the officer that the magistrate has used. So, there's an attachment A, which is on appendix page three, and that's where they list premises of property that you can search when you get there. But I contend that is not part of the affidavit, that is just a separate list that will allow, once the warrant is issued, will allow you to search this thing. So, the, the description of the truck was vague, which says, "A dark blue Nissan truck with an unknown dark blue on a registration," is what they do from a witness, and this is straight from the affidavit. And then they said, "This is consistent with a dark blue Nissan Titan that was observed at the road." So, I mean, you have dark blue and a Nissan Titan, but, you know, there are a lot of pickup trucks in North Carolina, and just the presence of the dark blue truck with no other connection from something a month earlier, to me is not a close call.
There's a deal, next to the service stand, that both sides rely on state versus Almond to support their respective positions. You as to the house, the state as to the vehicles, and yet still, the totality of the circumstances seem to play in each of your circumstances, which you look at in different ways.
I'd like to ask you a few questions about the Kia. Sure. One of the, one of the other, one of the many objects of this case, because there's nothing in the search warrant affidavit about the Kia actually being found on premises. Are there any circumstances in which officers can lawfully obtain a search warrant for an item of property that they, that there's no indication they actually have possession?
Maybe there are. In this case, it's hard to explain why that's not there. I mean, you're right, that would have been a really useful fact for the state to have included, and in fact, if you look at the Court of Appeals' opinion, and I call very clearly a moral argument that justice is saying, well, don't you have the presence of Mr. Lewis and the dark blue truck and the Kia Optima all in one place? And isn't that enough to draw inference? Like, you've got the car from this morning, which is much more, like, that's only hours old, not a month old, and then you have the other cars, and both of those kinds of cars, plus him being arrested. Well, that's not what we have. Somehow, the presence of the Kia got, and I think that the lower court, you know, blended in the facts from the testimony of the suppression hearing with what's actually they got to do, but nothing says the Kia was there. If it, if it did, that would be different. Because then you've got the car from that morning's robbery, so maybe there's more time close, so maybe he still has something in that car, but a month ago is a long.
And so, in the, in one part of the affidavit, you've got the VIN number, the identification number of the Kia, but there's no indication from the rest of the affidavit that the officer was paying that from that-
Right. It's puzzled.
But, you know, you worked on a case on which our courts have had to address whether you can properly issue a search warrant for, say, a vehicle that there's no indication in the search warrant affidavit that the officers have covered?
I'm not aware of one. I mean, there are a lot of important cases, so it's not impossible, but I'm not aware of one. And I'd like to look again, so I'm looking at the slip opinion on page 11, and this is where, this is about the Kia, and I'm just saying, they, they're talking about, so this is simply put, the pieces fit together real, they're quoting Almond, and then they talk about on the same day they arrested Lewis and of all the people in the world they saw Nissan Titans, and they don't say anything about the Kia just then. But then in the next sentence, there's this sort of conditional language, "If officers returned to that location and found a Nissan Titan and a Kia Optima there, then there was probable cause to believe there was evidence connected to the robberies." But they, that didn't happen, so it's almost like you're saying there was probable cause based on that if they found it once they got there, and that, you can't work backwards.
Then you have to go back and get a warrant based on that.
Yeah, or what they had to do is write it down in the affidavit.
And at least, at least as I read the search warrant, it authorizes the search of each of these four items that are listed as things to be searched independently of where they might be with the exception of the house.
I would think if the state found that Kia somewhere else, they would have said, "We can search this Kia."
Otherwise, had probable cause, that that the search warrant could authorize the search of this particular vehicle that they found or that are marked by outside of the court.
Right. I agree.
I want to ask you about the plain view issue that the Court of Appeals did not address. How can you understand conceptually, would that be a separate theory, separate in part from the identity of the warrant, as the law offices will act with the Kia? Or alternatively, would the officer require to put in the plain view information in the search warrant affidavit?
Right. The first one. Yeah, they, they could have, what was argued below is that it was a separate basis to be able to search the Kia itself, notwithstanding whether you can search the house, other than the warrants.
But if hypothetically, we've read the view that there was no probable cause based on the warrant, to issue the warrant to search the Kia, would you appropriate remand be for us to remand to the Court of Appeals to address the plain view issue?
Yes. And you can argue it again for appeals. That's what I put at the end of my brief, I think that is correct, because they, they did not address it, because they held that the warrant was sufficient to cover the house and, no, to cover the Kia.
And I would add, so, you know, there is, of course, the companion Court of Appeals upheld an opinion on these seven facts for the Johnson County conviction, and it was an issue that you raised in that appeal on a factual basis for the kidnapping.
The kidnapping, yes.
So how would that factor into the mix, if hypothetically, we were to agree with you that the search warrant was improper to issue?
So they didn't decide that kidnapping issues either, and that would be another issue that would have to be addressed in the Johnson County case. Maybe the cases would then divide and be argued separately.
But wasn't the, weren't defendants guilty of these conditions on their emissions press?
Yes.
Willing to be, uh, fine?
Correct. So I guess first, maybe the plain view would be decided, and then if it's not decided in the defendant's favor, then they could also address the kidnapping factual basis issue. Because if the, if the plain view issue is decided in defendant's favor, then the plea is set aside anyway, and then the factual basis is...
Do you say we would still have to remand to the Court of Appeals to decide the plain view?
I believe in that.
Is there anything apparently different between vehicles being mobile and personal property and a residence being real property relative to the issues of search warrant under these circumstances?
Under these circumstances, no, because the Kia was parked in the middle of the yard, it wasn't even in the driveway. We talked about it in the run, where appeals were even, if it's in, if it was parked on the street, you could look at it because there's reduced expectation of privacy. If a car is parked on the street or in a parking lot or anywhere, but if it's parked within the curtilage of a house, then it's covered just as well as the house could be. I wanted to touch on State versus Campbell and State versus Almond. So I think they're the closest cases to this situation. And I want to say in both of them, they're similar. They both had defendants who were probably drug dealers. And we can make the analogy that we have a defendant who was probably a robber, based on all the facts that are in the affidavit. In Campbell, these were the drug dealers on campus, and they were, they were selling drugs at a different location, and then the police decided they could search the house. So there's proof that they were, or that they might be drug dealers, we knew their address at the house, and they were missing that last step about why would, why would you think that a drug dealer would have drugs in their house if they were dealing in a different location? And this court said, even that missing step was enough to say there is insufficient probable cause. And so that was a case where they already had residency, which we don't have here. Nothing to connect Mr. Lewis to this residence, except that he was arrested there.
I don't disagree with your colleague, who's, at least as I'm understanding, argues that residency might be relevant and it's not conclusive that the issue is that there's some reason to believe that evidence related to the offense would be found in a location to be searched.
Yes, I agree.
But that's past, really, the question, not residency might be relevant to that, but it's not a sole feature.
Right. But under the fact that in this case, that's the only way you get into this house, is to connect him, I think. I mean, maybe there's some other way.
I mean, hypothetically, if you had somebody who could search, in the affidavit decided the next door neighbor said the Kia drove up to the car or drove up to the house and I saw the defendant get out of the car and he had a bag marked where the person robbed in Johnson County, even if it wasn't residence, if it could be signed, that would be sufficient on it.
Right.
So the issue is not, residence might be relevant to the issue of whether there's a reasonable basis to search the residence, but it's not the only way you can get there.
Right. But under the fact that we have...
If you have that here's the issue.
Yeah. And I think that's, you know, maybe the Court of Appeals just sort of took a shortcut there in saying, well, you didn't, what they said was you didn't connect him to this house, so there's no reason to think there's robbery, evidence and everything. Um, Ms. Van den Berg, if you wish to refer to that. Okay, thank you. I want to talk just for just a minute about the Kia. And say that in the affidavit, I think the state is going to say that that separate listing of the Kia's registration, because we talked about it in briefs, even though it's not in the affidavit, the fact that it's in a warrant would somehow allow you to say that the Kia was there and read that into the warrant. And I'm arguing that you shouldn't do that because the case law and statute about search warrants say that it has to be in the affidavit, sworn testimony basis for probable cause. And the one fact that was missing from the affidavit, in order just to get to the Kia and not even the house, is that the Kia was located at the same place as Mr. Lewis and the truck. And without that fact, I don't see how there is probable cause to get in that Kia.
Well, there's nothing in the search warrant affidavit about the Kia being located anywhere, is there?
No. The Kia is named as the vehicle he's leaving the Smithfield robbery.
Right, right.
Right.
But on the affidavit, it's red.
Right. No, it never said red. And I'll reserve the rest sometime. Thank you.
I'd like to address, Your Honors, a few issues that need to be brought up in my ruling. Of course, I do want to, slip opinion page nine is where the Court of Appeals made a statement that it seems to be far easier if law enforcement had included the statement that they searched warrant. Justice Earl, you mentioned Almond and what the distinction is between the two cases. I think it's important, I think it may be helpful to line up the evidence that tied it, that we said tied Mr. Lewis to this. In Almond, it was a mom's, a mom's statement and a registered vehicle outside, basically. In our case, we have the fact that this guy was here after the robbery and a car was parked there, and, and I think maybe if you substitute the registered fact that the red, you have mom's state and the registered vehicle, substitute registered vehicle with those individuals standing outside, that would have been helpful. And so I think in this case, you have Lewis standing outside and you have him fleeing the robbery hours earlier, which I think is even stronger than the mom's, you know, your statement that they're there. Justice Morgan, I think it's important to recognize, you know, what are the chances that this dark blue Nissan Titan is going to be parked out there? And more importantly, the 30 days actually supports the state's position, because it goes to this, you know, common sense view that this is a criminal refuge, a place that this person stays at regularly.
Well, that logic, would your argument be stronger if it was two years later?
Uh, no. No, but that, we know that the robberies occurred within 30, 30 days of this particular affidavit. I don't know, I'd have to think about that further, whether was stronger, that would make it stronger.
Could you talk about the Kia?
I can, I have 15 seconds.
The fact that there's no indication that it was found on the local location. How do you get a search warrant for something that there's no indication the officer was found it?
This is a really important point, I have five seconds. The, the search warrant was prescribed to 7085 Warrenburg, but that's the title of the search warrant, they couldn't search anywhere else. Thank you. Now, I should reverse on the house and affirm on the car.
Yes.
Could my small business conference last that long?
Um, I can respond that the search warrant affidavit didn't say the Kia was there and that it can't be read in from the other parts of the warrant. If there are no other questions?
I need just one, just general question. It seems like the arrest warrant is signed by the same magistrate who issued the search warrant. Are there any circumstances that a magistrate could consider the information that was previously presented to magistrate in assessing probable cause in the search warrant?
I remember looking at that, and we haven't argued that in briefs. I think that the law would say, including Almond and Campbell in the statute, that you're limited to looking at, the magistrate is limited to looking at what is before the magistrate in the affidavit in this case. I never saw a case that allowed them to go back to a different case. In conclusion, enforcing the Constitution is not always easy. Here, the Fourth Amendment requires that this evidence be suppressed. If we don't enforce search warrant protections, then we don't have search warrant protections. On behalf of Mr. Lewis, I'm asking the court to suppress the evidence found in the search of the house and the Kia and to thereby uphold the Fourth Amendment. Thank you. Thank you. We have certainly enjoyed our time here at Halifax, and Mr. Donbree and Ms. Van den Berg appreciate the time right here for this court event.
All rise. Oh, yes, oh, yes, oh, yes. The Supreme Court of North Carolina will be in recess until 9:30 tomorrow morning in Greenville, North Carolina. God save the state and this honorable court.